Hello and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, June 18, 2025. Before we start our meeting tonight, I would ask everyone if we can stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one moment of silence for our soldiers, past and present. So this meeting is being recorded by the Dartmouth Community Media. And before we start, I do have one announcement. The next regular meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, July 9, 2025. Our first item on the agenda tonight is various ZAV 25-4. The petitioner applicant is Dionne Colletta, and she's also the owner. The subject property is located at 25 Thatcher Street, map 122, lot 91-1. This property is located in the general residence district, and this application, this case, was advertised in the Chronicle on May 29, 2025, and June 5, 2025. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that we waive the reading of the butters list.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're waiving the reading of the butters list. We do have a butters list available at the ZBA office. If anyone wishes to look at the, the list is available, they can call Michelle. So this petition is a variance to reduce the setbacks from the required 20 feet to zero feet, to construct an outdoor deck slash kitchen grill area in the rear of the house to the property line. And this is, the applicant is seeking a variance per Article 375-10.4 D.1B Development Standards. I do have a couple of letters here on file. Usually we start with the, we do have the, the denial letter from the building commissioner. So basically what you've tried to do, you try to get a building permit, and then the commissioner said, I can't grant a building permit because this requires a variance from the zoning board of appeal, and that's why you're here. So this says, I, this is from the building commissioner. It says, I have reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with the current zoning regulations. And he goes to, explains why, and you're seeking to reduce the setback from the required 20-foot setback in the rear to zero, and you need a variance. And he cites the section of the zoning bylaws. The, we also have some standard from the other board, DPW, and the Board of Health and Conservation. I think at this time, there's no other comments from other department. Although we did receive, I believe yesterday, a, a letter from Attorney Perry, I believe, and this is in opposition to, to this application. And I'm going to read that into the record, and we can give the applicant a copy after, so if you'd like to wish to have a copy. And it says, this is addressed to the zoning board of appeals, and it says, Dear members of the board, I represent the South Dartmouth Cemetery, whose property abuts the residence that is the subject of the referenced application. I'm willing to express the cemetery's opposition to this application. Mr. Colletta's residence is close to a number of existing grave sites and is immediately adjacent to an area that is, that the cemetery expects to utilize in the near future for expansion. The cemetery believes that the noise and activity associated with the outdoor kitchen and grill will diminish the atmosphere of solemn, calm, and quaintness that the cemetery seeks to foster, as appropriate for both intimate ceremonies and for persons visiting the remains of their deceased loved ones. The cemetery recognizes that there is a limit to the extent to which it can screen off the effects of the activities of its residents, residential neighbors, but nevertheless wants to restrict that impact, at least to the scope dictated by zoning regulations. There is nothing in the application that demonstrates hardship that is peculiar, peculiar to this parcel. The applicant has ample area to the east of the residence that could accommodate the planned kitchen grill area within the limits specified by the zoning bylaw. The convenience of the homeowner is not a hardship within the meaning of the zoning act, and says, very truly yours, Daniel Perry. And Attorney Perry is, is an attorney with offices in Lubbock. Other than that, I don't have anything in the file, and at this time, I would ask the applicant to come to the podium and present their case. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dionne Colletta. I am the, oops, didn't realize that was on wheels. I'm the applicant. I live at 25 Thatcher Street. I do have, I know I uploaded some drawings to the website portal. I do have hard copies here, if anyone would like to see them.
We have the hard copies.
Okay.
Thank you.
As far as the location of the, of the deck, I cannot put it on the, have to get my bearing ship, my, the western side of the property due to the proximity to wetlands. I heck, I can't do any, I can't do anything on that side. So that side's closed off to me. I do not have a large area in the back. I think it's a total of 26 feet from the rear of the building to the property line. So, you know, trying to take advantage of whatever space I have. I've had no complaints or issues with noise or impediments on anything that happens on any of my neighbors. I've been more than respectful to anyone that's visiting. I have grandparents that I can see from my kitchen window, and I see their gravestones from the kitchen window. So, I mean, obviously, I have respect for that, for that cemetery. It's personal now also to myself because of, I have family there. You know, I'm a 50-year-old man, and I don't plan on having big raving parties till midnight. It's just an area to enjoy with family and friends during the day, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any of the board members have questions for Mr. Colletta?
I have a question. What is, what do you say your hardship to the land is?
My hardship to land is the, the area which I can place it. I don't have a lot of.
Everybody has that. What is the hardship specific to your piece of property that would grant, allow us to grant you a variance? Has to be specific to your piece of property, otherwise we're not allowed to grant a variance.
Proximity to the wetlands. I can't build.
That's the west side. What's the story on the east side?
The east side is the opposite side of the house. It's on the, near the, it's on the opposite side near the garage, and it's not a, a good space because I'd be, I'd be encroaching other neighbors on the other side.
You're doing the same thing for the people in back, the cemetery. Let me just say right up front, when I saw your application, I don't think I or anybody on this board has ever granted a variance where there's zero, when you're asking for no distance between your property and the next piece of property. So, and I haven't heard anything that leads me to believe that you have a hardship to your land, and so to, for us to even come up with the facts to support a granting of a variance. I'm sure you don't even understand what I'm saying when I say the term hardship to the land.
To an extent, but not professionally, no.
Right. So that, that creates another problem, not a problem, but the, a zoning board, no matter where they are, in order to grant a variance under the statute that allows for variances, we're required to find certain facts based on the position of the land, the circumstances of the land, and the issue has to deal with the land itself, not because you don't want to put it to the, to the side of your garage, or you don't want to put it on a side where there's some wetlands, and you want to go directly behind your house. That doesn't cut the issue of hardship. So I don't know what else to say, other than, I'm not inclined to grant this.
Mr. Colletta, as a board, we do need to, to have findings on the very specific, the statutory for granting a, a variance are very clear. Now, I, I didn't have a chance to talk to the building commissioner. I, I, just late this afternoon, or just before I came here, I just thought about something. From your, from the plans or the drawings that you submitted, I don't see, there's a rendering, and I'm not sure if this is really to, that indicates what the grades in the back, but it looks like your, your deck is very low. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So in this case, you might want to talk to the building commissioner, you know, because over, under a certain height, that might be considered a patio. And I don't believe there's a setback to a patio, you know, because technically, we understand his, the activities, but to be practical, if he doesn't have a deck, he still has the right to walk all the way to the back of the property and put his grill right on the grass and do whatever, you know, so it's. The issue for us is the technical issue more than anything else, because we can't really, if this is considered a structure, we can't grant a variance and, as Attorney Human indicated. I've been on this board probably almost 20 years now, I'm not sure, but I don't think we ever granted zero setback, you know. I mean, even, I understand this is a deck, though, it's not a structure, but just the fact that you grant a zero setback is something that unheard of, you know. So I think at this time, you have few options. Either, I think it looks like, most likely with this is not gonna, unfortunately, with three board members, and you need three votes, and I don't think you have the votes. So either you can, well, give them the opportunity, if you want to withdraw your application without prejudice, so in case you need to come back for something else this way, you don't have to wait two years to do it, right?
Yep.
We can continue the hearing to, I mean, I'm not sure if there's some room here, but I know there's, you know, like, I looked at this, and you might do something, maybe you don't need to go all the way back. I don't know if 10 feet might work for you, or, I'm not sure if you're willing to entertain something like that, or not the, it's still the, still the variance.
I'm willing to entertain something that does not have zero.
Right.
Understood.
You know, I, I think, you know, quickly, I looked at it, you know, we, you have some options in the back, and as I said, you might want to talk to the building commissioner. And if this is considered a patio, you may not have to comply with the setback.
Okay.
But if it's, if it's a structure that, the stairs might be part of the, if you have two, three stairs that attach to the building, they, the setback might apply to, but I think you're, you can do this within, within the 20 feet in the back.
Okay.
So that's another option.
I will, I'll entertain that option, for sure.
I mean, if.
The other, the other option, not an option, but if your parents are buried in the cemetery behind you, then, then you know the people from the cemetery association. Go talk to them.
Oh, you did? All right, hang on. All right. You need to come to the podium when, you'll have a chance to speak, but. So I think at this time, it seems like, well, this is a public hearing before we, we, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the, or do you have more questions? I think we, let's see if there's anyone in the public. We can figure out. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who's here for this petition that would like to voice their opinion, either in support or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Catherine Dias, caretaker at the South Dartmouth Cemetery. Obviously, you got the letter from Attorney Dan Perry.
Yes.
But I do have a photo. I don't know if Dan provided you with the photos, a couple of photos of the property. But a structure was put up in 2022.
Oh.
And I have a picture of it, and it, the building department was notified, and I believe Mr. Calheda was told to take it down. And right now, I can show you a picture for the past three years, that the wall of the structure is still leaning against the cemetery fence, but the roof was cut off. And if I, I've got my computer, if I could show it to you, it'd be, you could understand it more.
Sure.
So that is the structure, right, the other wall, and this roof is attached to it.
Okay.
So it's leaning against the fence, and still to this day, that wall is still leaning against the fence.
Okay. Okay.
So no question that the cemetery association does not want anything built behind his house under any set of facts?
Correct.
Right. Yeah, but now.
Well, it'll be up to the building department to look at what options.
Right. That, other options, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to see if anybody else would like to say something?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience for this case? Please come to the podium. So we, we understand that a structure in the back within a setback is not appropriate at this time, or within the setback, right? So are we still, I mean, with the options, we can still, you want to keep this open just so Mr. Colletta will have a chance to go talk to the building inspector, or which is?
I have no problem with that.
I think.
So what do we want to do in terms of timeframe?
Our next meeting is July 9.
July 9.
Is that enough time? Is that enough time to July 9 for you to go talk to the building inspector?
I'll make the, I'll make sure it happens by, by the July 9 date.
No? Yes?
Yes, but I won't, I have another, I have a public hearing in Norfolk that night. But Mike will be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we need a motion to continue this case to July 9, and this way, just so we, so you, you understand what's going on here.
I do.
So which is, so most likely, at the next meeting, it may be, you may decide that you wanted to withdraw the application, and then we can vote on it. But we're giving you an, an option just to talk to the building commissioner and see what options do you have. Or also look at the plans and see what options you have on the, you know, if you can, if you can make it work within a setback, you don't need to come back here, obviously, for the zoning board.
Of course.
But.
I will do that.
That would be another option for you, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
I make, I make a motion that we continue variance case ZAV-25-4 for 25 Thatcher Street to July 9, 2025.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll see you. Our next meeting on the agenda is ZAV 25-5. The applicant is Derek and Crystal Andrade, and the subject property is located at 33 Sagamore Drive, map 131, lot 47. It's in the single residence A. This case was advertised on May 9, 29, 2025, and June 5, 2025. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the butters list.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We waive the reading of the butters list. We do have a butters list available at the ZBA office if anyone wishes to examine or look at. The petitioner is seeking a variance to reduce front setback from 30 feet to 19.8 feet in order to build an 830-square-foot attached ADU unit. So ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, which will be 19.8 from the street line, encroaching on the required 30-foot front setback. This house was built in 1973, so qualifies for a 10-foot perimeter lines and 30-foot setback from the street. And this is per Article 375-7.4 D.4B Development Standards. I do have a few letters here on, on file, the, the one, we have the one from the building commissioner, and again, this is no, this is how you start your process. You file for a building permit, and, you know, if the building commissioner cannot grant the permit, he would advise you to file with the zoning board, either for a special permit or a variance, but in this case, you need a variance. And this is the letter from the building commissioner. It says that you need to file for a variance with the zoning board because you don't meet the 30-foot setback, and your structure would be placed 19.8 feet from the street line. No other comments from Conservation, DPW, the standard comments that you have to do has to do with getting the trench permit and the stormwater requirements for erosion I do have, on this, I do have four or five, six supporting letters from the neighbors, and I won't go, they're all in support. I won't read every single one, but I can probably go mention the addresses. And this is from Mr. Santos, 37 Sagamore Drive. I have 32 Sagamore Drive, 28 Sagamore Drive, 30 Sagamore Drive, and you have two more, right?
Yep. So 28, didn't we?
28 and 30, yeah.
30. Do we have 32?
I don't believe I mentioned.
37?
37. I have 32.
Okay, we have 37.
I have 37. So that's four.
Okay.
So we have four letters, so we need to vote. What was that? Yeah, the owner is in support. Oh, so that's, yes. Do, I think we need, do we have a motion to accept these letters to the?
Let me just see one of them. I make a motion that we accept the letters from neighbors in support of ZAV-25-5 and, and accept them for the file.
Do I have a second?
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So they're part of the record now. Is the owner or his representative here tonight to present this case? Come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Derek Andrade, owner of 33 Sagamore Drive.
Okay, and Mr. Andrade, can you tell the board what?
I'm just trying to plan an ADU unit, 830 square feet for my parents that are here today. Just trying to get them into a more accessible unit where they'll be with us to be more comfortable.
I, any questions for the board members?
I'm looking at the plan.
Yes.
And the, the proposed addition is going to be attached to the house?
Yes, sir.
Will there be access from the house to the proposed addition?
We did not plan on that, no. It would be a separate unit.
All right. I have no additional questions.
I don't have any, thank you.
No questions, okay. So I just have Mr. Andrade. Is there a reason why the shape of the, the addition, the way it is?
Yes, only, only because where the house is on a, on a slant towards the squareness of the property, if we go, as you go back further, it gets narrower, and it's already narrower there. So I didn't want to approach on any of the neighbors going that way. We already have the 10-foot clearance. So it would be more towards the front of the street where we kick it off. It would make it more of a, where that kitchen unit is, that small pantry. It's going to be a cathedral ceiling there, so it just gives them more of a living space where it'd be a little bit more open, not just like a, a rabbit-run tunnel.
This is.
If you don't, I have one if you need it.
All right, I was just looking for the, yeah.
Yeah, so as, as it would go back, it would make it awful narrow in the back. So I am technically 30 feet from the building structure, would be 30 feet back from the existing street line.
No, no, yeah, but.
And feet is back. No, I understand.
No, the street line is not the edge of pavement.
Yep.
It's the right of way.
Got you.
We understand your.
Thank you.
I have a question for me.
Sure.
I wonder if you ever decide to look at it in another way to put us, this is a one-floor apartment, one-floor building.
Yes.
Maybe you can put a second floor, and that would be a lot easier. You don't have, need any.
No, I do understand. It's just the, it's, it's more for the accessibility factor.
The elderly.
Going up and down the stairs is kind of not the option. That's kind of what we're trying to get away from. It's more for accessibility.
It's possible, but these days, they have escalator that you can take at home, and it's very easy and safe to go up and down, just, just to consider, for you to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board members? Is there anyone in the audience here for this case that would like to voice their, either their support or opposition to this case? Please come to the podium, state your name and, and address, please.
Robert Sebingney. I live at 35 Sagamore Drive, next, next to the.
35 Sagamore, and so you, you're in a butter, you're in, so are you, you're in a butter to the?
My house would be on the side of the.
On the south side?
On the north side.
On the north side, okay. Your lot, map, lot 48?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have no objection to what he's doing, trying to do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Ken Sutton. I'm 31 Sagamore. I'm on the other side, and.
On the south side?
Correct.
Okay.
I have no objections to this project.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? No?
Oh, there's another gentleman.
Oh. Yes, sir.
I am Charles Days. I'm directly across the street at number 30. I have no objection to the project.
Back to the board. Any questions? I have no questions.
I have no questions.
I have no question, thank you.
More questions? Okay. We'll keep the public hearing open just in case we have to communicate with the applicant, but. So I guess we do have some findings here and we can go over. And anytime you want to interrupt me or if you have any additions or comments, please let me know. The subject property is located at 33 Sagamore Drive, Dartmouth, and is also known as MAP 131 Lot 47 on the town of Dartmouth, Massachusetts map. The property measures 15,658 square feet and has been owned by Derek and Crystal Andrade since April 2000 and is located in the single residence A district. Currently, there's a residential dwelling on the property. The subject property is serviced, served by Town and Water Sewer, Town Water and Sewer. The applicant petitioner is seeking a variance per Article 375-7.4D.4B Development Standards to reduce the front setback from the required 30 feet to 19.8 to construct an 830-square-foot attached accessory dwelling unit encroaching on a 30-foot front setback from the street. The house on the property was built in 1973 and qualifies for the 10-foot perimeter lines and 30-foot setback from the street, 30-foot from the street. The board finds that the proposed 830-square-foot addition to the house is not more detrimental to the neighborhood and would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The requested variance meets the statutory requirement for granting a variance pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A and 10. And here we are, right? There are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that specifically affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure or land is located. Now, I, I think the location of the existing dwelling in the center of the property, right? And then there's a deck system along the rear of the property. So obviously, the, the location of the existing structure and the deck prohibits the placement of the addition except in the area that it's shown on the plan. We agree on that?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, so basically, the location of the existing dwelling in the center of the property and the location of the deck system along the rear of the property limit the placement of the proposed addition to the north side of the dwelling at the location shown on the plan. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The placement of the proposed addition in a, in a location other than what is shown on the plans would require removing the decking system along the rear, which impact the use of the rear yard and would cause substantial hardship to the petitioner. Desireable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. The proposed addition would be in harmony with the surrounding properties having similar structures and setbacks to their property lines. Relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. So I did look at the aerial and I see the houses and the, you know, so it's more or less what, you know, it's nothing out of the ordinary. So, I mean, most houses like within 30 feet and so, you know, of the street setback, it's not, and 10 feet from the property line. The variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The design of the proposed addition structure complements the existing residential dwelling and residential uses surrounding the property. The variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And by, by the way, I think I looked, this is, this is exactly what we would want to look for when you have another dwelling attached to it. It looks like it's part of the structure. They integrate, they did a decent job integrating the addition into the main. So, you know, it's not a detached where we see two big masses connected by a small hallway, you know? So I think this is, this is not detrimental to the neighborhood, you know? And then the conditions would be the standard conditions. They have to apply and secure all the necessary permits from the building departments and site plans and architectural plans. We just referenced the plans that were submitted. At this time, is there anything that the board would like to discuss or? Nothing? Okay, then have a, do you want a motion to close the public?
I make a, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the public hearing portion is closed. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve variance case ZAV-25-5 for 33 Sagamore Drive with the stated findings and the stated conditions.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Now. Next is the administr, is the administrative minutes. Excuse me.
Excuse me.
We're still in session. Please quiet. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is. I need to find my. Okay, I think I got. It's the administrative portion of tonight's meeting. First item is the review and approval of administrative minutes of April 28, 2025. I have no comments on this one.
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative, the administrative minutes of April 28, 2025 as written.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next one is the review and approval of administrative minutes of May 7, 2025. I, I just have like one typo, I think, or something. It's not, it's not a big deal. I think I circled them. I think that's in feet, not inches, just. I, I think you might, no, you have it right, but on the second. Any, the board members have any?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, so we can.
I have nothing.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of May 7, 2025 as written and corrected.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the review and approval of special permit ZSP-25-2 minutes for 37 Stone Ledge Road. Is that right? Wait a minute. Do I have that or I don't have that? This is.
37.
26.
Mine says variance.
Yeah, that, that definitely was an error.
Okay, wait a minute. Then is this 25-3, right? Okay. Review and approval of variance ZAV-25-3 minutes for 26 Onyx Drive. Uh, I have no comments.
I have no comments.
I have no comments, thanks.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of variance case ZAV-25-3 as written.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is review and approval of administrative minutes of May 21, 2025. And I have no comments.
Did we skip one? Special permit 25-2?
This is administrative minutes, right? Yeah. May 21st?
We should have two.
This is the administrative minutes. Oh, okay.
We should have two for May 7th?
May 7th?
That's what you have listed.
Yeah, the, the middle one wasn't there, right? The special permit ZSP-25-2.
How did you put that in?
I didn't see it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
So we owe that one, okay.
Yeah, just, just put in the, or the next one, that's fine. So the review and approval of administrative minutes of May 21st.
Wait. Oh, we just did this one, right?
Which one is that, May 7th?
That's, yeah. No, wait a minute.
Yeah, we did that. This is.
No, that's the one, that's the one that was in front of it. But it says variance on it.
Oh, you have it. Oh, he has it.
He does have it, okay.
Okay, I, I don't know. I, maybe it's in the.
37 Stone Ledge. ZSP. 37 Stone Ledge, yeah.
Yes.
No, this is. ZAV, oh, maybe this two. No, ZAV-25.
Which date is that one?
May 7th.
Okay, there is two of those. So May 7th and then May 21st. So you may not have gotten that in your packet.
Okay.
Okay, so May 7th, ZAV-25-2.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you have that, Alvin?
I have it, but it says variance, not special permit.
Right, that's, okay, that's an error, so I'll fix that.
Oh. Okay, so we're approving these minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for variance case ZAV-25-2 for May 7, 2025 for 37 Stone Ledge Road as written.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we, we're going to the review and approval of may administrative minutes of May 21st, right?
Yeah.
What's that?
You had already given it to me.
Oh, oh, okay.
So you lost that, yes.
Oh, that's the one. Oh.
Yeah, you had it mixed up, that's okay.
Oh, all right. Okay, sorry.
No, no big deal.
So review and approval of administrative minutes of May 21st. We, we already approved, we already voted on that. Uh, next one?
I don't think so, I don't think we voted on that.
We didn't do the admin, we went back to Stone.
Oh, I thought, I, okay. All right, so I, I have no comment.
I have none either. So I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of May 21st, 2025 as written.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, going too fast. Review and approval of variance ZAV-25-3 minutes for 26 Onyx Drive.
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of variance case ZAV-25-3 for 26 Onyx Drive as written.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last item on the administrative agenda is the review and approval of special permit ZSP-25-3 for 612 Fisher Road.
I have nothing to add.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I have nothing to add.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of special permit dated May 24, minutes dated May 21st, 2025 for special permit ZSP-25-3, 613 Fisher Road as written.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, anything else that we want to discuss?
That's it.
That's it, and.
Let's make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.